This will call the Sanger City Council into regular session on Monday, November 17th, 2025 at 7:23 PM. If you will please rise for the invitation to be led by Councilman Gann, followed by the Plaiders, to be led by Councilwoman Barrett.
Please. Dear members, once again we come to you to say thank you for your interest in this business. Thank you for all our opportunities. Just please continue our discussion, show us as well, and help us as we can call these situations on charge or whatever. Jesus is with you. Amen.
If you will, church or baseball. I have a pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the middle of it with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Thank you, may we see. The first item as usual on our agenda is our citizens' input time. Anyone wishing to speak during that time on any item that you'd like to speak on is welcome to do so. We do like to get a citizens' input form from you, just so for the record, so we have it. And we would like for you to state your name and address for the record when you come up. And usually we allow about three minutes for that discussion. Council cannot deliberate or not really interact with you in any of that time because it's not a posted agenda item, but we can be all ears, as can staff. So we're happy to have any citizens' input at this time. If there's anyone who would like to come forward, we would just ultimately, you don't have to have a form now, you can get one after you talk. So is anybody wishing to come forward tonight during citizens' input? Okay, seeing no one approaching the podium, we'll move on to the reports. And look for Ronnie to give us annual electric department presentation. Look forward to that.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Yep.
This is the electric department annual update. An overview of what we're going to talk about tonight, major projects, completions, ongoing developments, system upgrades, infrastructure and improvements, workforce initiative and training, and future planning, and reliability enhancements. The Bells Road Retail Edition project progress. The Tom Thumb Grocery Store is fully online. We've set several transformers for the additional retail. And the Bells Road multifamily electric infrastructure is installed for Phase One. The Blue Star Industrial-
Ronnie, I got a question. Is that including the substation out there that we were doing the rework on some of that? Or is that separate?
That's separate, from the Bells Road, yes. The Blue Star Industrial project progress, the second building they've set out there, they call it Build Now. The transformer has been set. We're waiting on the electricians to install their secondary wire before we can bring it online. Our new electric meter program, the smart meter rollout started in June of 2023. There's 257 meters remaining, delayed due to supply chain issues. We now have those meters and the installers will be here this week to finish the installation. The full program is expected to enhance monitoring, efficiency, and customer service. Some electric department stats, this year there was 187 meters installed for new businesses and residential. We did 2,178 work orders. These work orders included disconnects, reconnects, streetlights, and tree trimming. We also had 2,355 locates.
What does that mean, when I say locate? I say that every month that comes out.
So we're a member of the 811, so anytime anybody wants to dig, they call 811 and it's a work order for us. And our guy has to go out and locate the electric lines.
That's what it is, you're locating the electric lines underground.
Yeah.
Okay.
The substation expansion, enhancing capacity and reliability. The design for the substation has been approved. Our engineer got that, and he has approved it. This will include a new 20 MVA transformer to support future load growth. The new transformer will also have four reclosures, giving us a total of eight feeder circuits out of the substation. And this will pave the way for loop circuits and future capacity increases.
And this will essentially double our capacity?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The I-35 expansion, the electric infrastructure relocated for the I-35 expansion is complete. We're working on the reimbursement part of that now. The remaining poles are waiting communication line removal. There's coordination going on with the telecommunications providers. It's taken so long that now tech's stopped, they're involved, so they're trying to help us out also.
But the takeaway is, the city of Sanger has completed all of its work.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, all the electric is moved over. Our apprenticeship program and workforce development. Our apprenticeship program was reinstated in 2025 with the Texas Workforce Commission. Our last apprentice that we had in the program was 2011. So we had to get with the Workforce Commission to reinstate it to get our two new guys. We're focused on building skilled talent and strengthening department succession and The future project is the I-35 North Primary Line. We're preparing the system for resilience. We're in early stages of building the new primary line. This line is between View Road and Chisholm Road, and once completed, this line will complete the entire west side of I-35 in our service area. It will create a loop circuit after the substation expansion is completed, and it will improve redundancy and service reliability for the I-35 Florida. 2025 in review, we had major commercial and residential projects energized. We're continuing progress on modernization efforts, installing switch gears, reclosures, and trip savers on our three-phase and single-phase primary taps, and we're strategically planning for future growth and reliability.
What questions do you have?
You might give council a feel on the tack, the substation kind of timing and such. We know, I know it's way up in the air because of the transformer availability and stuff, but might be a good time to get kind of a general.
Where we're at.
Yeah.
I think that the, we'll talk a little bit about that later. We have some acquisition that we need to discuss for Keith Road, which will finalize, that's really the only portion we have left to look at besides the plans. Brazos had sent the plans over, they've gone to Bobby for review on his side. There were some minor changes that we requested on those, but they are making those changes, and it appears that that will be budgeted for the next cycle. So their timeframe is still probably 18 to 24 months out from now, but now we have it now. You know, we bounced around with no plans, no, nothing on their agendas to get your budget in and all those things. We seem to be over some of those humps. We still have some discussions we need to have with Coserv on a couple of other items, just having to do with future substations, substation placement, and some things like that that will impact anything that we do. Again, just because we're updating this substation for capacity, we still have a redundancy issue. Our redundancy on this project will always remain a mobile sub until we have another substation. So that is on Ronnie's list of other projects to determine that if Brazos, it will be Brazos or Intex, depending on how far they really want to get up or how far they're going to get up in this area. But the moment that we are aware of the substation that may be going in, we're positioning ourselves to have those discussions with whoever that might be, that does that, does that work so that we can get our secondary issue, which is the redundancy hopefully solved. But we don't have a good timeframe on that. There's been some scuffle about substations and substations going into the north, but we don't have any concrete information that makes us believe that that is certainly happening. But we are keeping our ears to the rails to make sure that we don't miss an opportunity if that does become available. So, and you know, Ronnie, I'm going to let everybody else know, every time I talk to Ronnie, I say, keep it simple. I like to think I know a lot about certain things, I know nothing about electricity. So I know we were working on capacity, but the distribution, those distribution lines, that's a whole separate issue altogether, what we had talked about at our workshop. So while we're waiting for that capacity to actually be available, and you said 18 to 24 months out, is this the time when we start upgrading those distribution lines? Or is that, I mean, I don't think it's that linear where you've got to wait and then start with the next one. Is there some overlap there?
Oh, definitely. I mean, yeah, and we've, I've already been working with Bobby, our engineer, and he's got a plan already drawn up, you know, to start.
But we don't, we can start that, we don't have to wait until that, we're, we have all that capacity about to go online, you know, 18 to 24 months from now. We can start on all of the distribution lines and start doing that.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
And you're budgeting, Captain, you have a million dollars a year right now dedicated to-
It's phased in, right. It can happen on, kind of, what I call profile lines or whatever, right. And a million, you know, that's, that's a little over a mile, you know, a mile's worth of line. It's what we're going to build to, you know, because one of the issues was, if we're not going to get the substation expansion, there's really no sense in upgrading to what we had talked about with John, you know, because we want to go to 900 amps versus 600 amps. So, but now that the substation is moving forward, that, you know, we feel like we need to move forward with the 900 amps too.
That's, that's always getting at.
Yes, yes.
When, when does that kick off? The money's there, and when it's coming, you'll be able to start phasing that in, so it's a seamless transition.
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Perfect.
Are we bucking trucks or like years out and all that stuff?
No, we actually, the salesman that we were dealing with, he finally retired, and Altech, another salesman lady, reached out and her, she now has our area, and she was saying that we're looking at 2026, at the end of 2026. So that's two years above what we thought it was going to be, so. And she said everything, you know, and he told me back then that it was going to gradually get better, you know, and it has, she said, right now it's about a two-year lead time. So, and we're, you know, so the end of 2026 will be just about right for us.
Good. So you're about to ask us for money?
Not yet, not yet. Well, I mean, later.
Any other questions for Ronnie?
Thanks, Ron.
We appreciate you coming out. All right, with that report done, council, we'll move on to the consent agenda. You've got your minutes of November 3rd. You've got a mutual aid agreement with Whitesboro on electric. You've got a purchase of a one-ton chassis. You've got a master service agreement with Snyder Engineering, who does a lot of our electrical consulting and regulatory and training and otherwise. It's all laid out there in your packet. And then the Christmas lights agreement, a second renewal, I believe. So as usual, we can pull any item that you'd like to discuss further. If there's nothing you feel like you need to discuss, then we can approve it in total. What's, what's your pleasure?
I can ask a question at 9:55. If I want to do that question, do I have to pull it?
I'd pull it.
Over.
That's the point of consent. So we can pull five. I mean, I have no problem pulling. Okay? Any other item to be pulled off of consent? Then I would, I would entertain a motion for consent item three, four, six, and seven.
I would like to make my special mention that the consent agenda items, three, four, six, and seven, has my consent.
I have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
I've got a motion by Councilwoman Barrett, seconded by Councilman Gann, approving consent agenda items three, four, six, and seven. All in favor indicate by raising your hand. Any opposed? None. Passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll take up agenda item five now, which is consideration of possible action on purchasing a 2026 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 heavy-duty cab and chassis from Caldwell Chevrolet and authorizing C manager to execute the agreement and all necessary documents. Who wants to ask a question?
Yeah, sure, sure. This is part of a very nice conversation is about permanent access to citizens in general, and how we have a dealership in town. So why don't we just buy our dealers more comfortable dealership? So I'm making sure that I gave you that. I've already got that covered. But the discussion we had, however, is that the state has specific rules about how to buy your vehicles, and one of those rules is that anything that rises to the dollar amount has to be with the state's intended to put it in. And the state also put out a law for contracts like the five board, which is in the memo here, and that where the meeting states rules were being a competitive purchase by utilizing a five-board contract. And that's why we can't just go down the street and buy whatever we want from our local dealership.
Yeah, and we, yeah, and we try. Some of it has to do with availability as well. We purchased two trucks from Glenn Polk, they're Ford, we got them at the Gainesville dealership, and they were available. So, so trying to keep it close to home, the last couple of trucks we did purchase, because they were available, the model was available, and it was on, was on the five board. This one, this vehicle that we're looking for was not available through that, that source, but it was available here through the five board. So, yes.
Does that make sure that I didn't overlook?
Not at all.
It's a good discussion, yeah. It's education for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I would like to make my special mention that the idea that you have for five, for 2026 Chevrolet Silverado, that we're going to be shooting down our shots from probably lately, I was presenting.
One second. Got, is that Bill you?
Yeah.
Okay. I've got a motion by Councilwoman Barrett, seconded by Councilman Bill you, to approve consent agenda item five, which is purchasing a 2026 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 HD cab and chassis as detailed in that agenda item. Any other discussion? All in favor indicate by raising your hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to action item eight, which is consideration of possible action on resolution 2025-19 to vote for candidates in the election of Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. We, we get a, based on our pro-rat allocation, we get some votes. You have that, the letter in the agenda item there, and we get to it. So we, we can either put them all on one, we can spread them around. I did notice in looking at the letter from the appraisal district that there's two out of the four that have a lot of entities nominating them. And I, I personally don't know any of those people, I'd be happy if somebody did and wanted to advocate. But my inclination would be that you've got two that are supported by very broad entities, and maybe we just split our vote between the two that have broad entity support. That's out there as just, you know, for consideration, I'm happy to consider anything else anybody wants to do.
No, the top two of the four are going to be appointed. That would probably be good. Because usually there's a bio, and it did say that they're still gathering that information. I didn't see.
I can't really take this.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got. We're looking for a vote to allocate the votes.
Yeah, we're looking for a vote to allocate the votes. We received those biographies very late. I actually had to, to get with CAD to get those. I'm sure this is a busy time of year for them, if I had to guess. The, and again, the incumbents, you have two incumbents there that we showed on your communicate. We did look at your place four and place seven are listed as incumbents and also available
So maybe I missed that. Are the top two that have such broad-based support, are they the incumbent folks or not? This is just one.
I believe so.
Well, it appears that other municipalities have done exactly what you've done. I don't know if they split it evenly or not, but we only have six, six votes.
Sometimes on these various appointments, whether it's Denco, 911, or whether it's this, we've had times where people have come and advocated for themselves, absent that and absent us knowing them more personally. That's the reason I kind of set the preface, preparatory statement that I said, so. It's totally up to council. But what would your pleasure be on how to vote those?
Well, I'm usually going to be open.
Yeah.
I don't have a strong beginning. I was originally back to split like six votes, and three votes for Mike Keffer, and then three votes for Ian Palmacall.
Okay.
No, hold on a second.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Councilwoman Barrett, seconded by Councilman Bill you, to take our six votes and split them evenly, three and three, to Mike Hennifer and Ann Palmacall. Any other discussion or advocacy anybody else wants to make? Okay, all in favor of the motion indicate by raising your hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Brings us to item nine, which is consideration of possible action on a contract with Granicus and the Delcom Group, providing for live streaming and recording of council meetings and authorizing C manager to execute the agreements.
Council, in your packet, you have my agenda communication. Based on the retreat, staff did go out and work with Granicus, Swaget, Swaget, Granicus for live streaming and video, which includes the purchase of the equipment, the installation of equipment. Also worked with Delcom, and they would be our AV company for setting up the microphones and connections by all the AV equipment that would go in the back. Both are on TIPS contracts, so they have met the, as more simplified, the purchasing requirements to be competitive vendors. The team from Granicus is in the audience to give me questions, and they did update their agreement with me and reduce the cost on some of the software purchases for closed caption.
Okay, is that what's reflected, the reduced cost is what's reflected in the packet?
No, sir. That came after the packet went out.
I don't know, Donna told us, we're here in the day, I don't really know the decisions to make, how many people are watching.
Yes, sir. The largest audience that we had was when Jared Patterson was here, 326. They do average anywhere between 70 and 50. And then on June 2nd, we had 321 votes, I think. That was, we had ready filing and financial statements, did we do a workshop, a budget workshop then? And then the results of the election, we had 138 views.
So your, again, legislative update, budget, and results of the election were your big, big views? And then the, the other views you have there, most of them are related to budget items, budgetary items, or those were probably the key items on the agenda. You have the Pid was one, and then of course, the code amendments and those items. So you're, you know, you're, you're getting, at the base, you get, get 40, 40 views, which is probably more than typically attempt, your meeting. Now that, you know, that question will be really twofold for the council, is do you, do you want to continue with, with doing those reportings? And two, do you want to do that with, with Granicus and that upfront cost? Basically, the costs related that have been proposed are to outfit your room for long-term live streaming of your council meetings.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that was the first thing, because we originally said we were going to do it six months as a trial.
Yeah.
And that's when we wanted the feedback. I mean, quite well taken from the city manager, 40 people viewing it is more than normally attends, but I don't think there's been a demand for live feed or anything else. And, and I really haven't had much feedback from those that are watching it 24 to 48 hours later. And I'm, I'm looking at the cost, and I'm trying to justify that cost, and I just don't know that there's demand, and one, whether we're going to continue to do it, but to do a live streaming versus the way we're doing it now. I think the way we're doing it now is extremely cost-effective and seems to be accomplishing the mission. People are satisfied. Have staff heard anything differently?
In, in the way of-
Of wanting live feed versus a delayed broadcast?
We currently have live feeds, so if you have feedback on that, please.
Nobody's complaining that it's not live feed.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. Any indication?
I've, I've, I've heard that people are generally pleased that the meetings are available. I've heard no demand in my office for live streaming, or Facebook streaming, or any of those items. And of course, those, a lot of those come with time. As you grow, you'll hear those, I'm sure. We did, you know, again, we did this with the intent of trying it out, you know? I think, I think it, I think it's effective. The, but again, the cost there is a pretty big, it's a big one to get over the hump. We did, you know, renew the contract recently as part of that. We did have pricing put in to continue what you're doing. That way you would have options if you chose to do those things. So it's really, again, it's really dependent on this council as to how, how you want to handle that. Again, if you, if you choose, if you choose not, not to record those, we were prepared for that as well. So it's really at your, at your pleasure, but we do think, we do think that they have been fine.
Are the council meetings, when is that, are they recorded and posted later?
No, I think every video we do is typically recorded and posted later.
Grup, so like it's planned?
Oh, no, yeah, no, council is all, all that we're utilizing those services for.
If there was that initial one-time cost of that equipment, maybe go on EDC with those EDCs that get mutually also be published and considered as-
If the council chose to do that, yeah, absolutely, we could run your boards. We, we would probably recommend you not run your EDC boards live, right? But your library boards and your other advisory boards, you could certainly do that if you so choose.
Once we purchase the equipment, it is-
Belongs to you.
-easy to use it for.
Correct.
Question is, is there any extra, like, processing or posting fees that relate to, to that, if it's spread broader?
Those are all included in your cost, correct?
If we recorded other meetings, then we- If we recorded other meetings, then we would add that to the number of hours or the number of videos.
So it is variable cost to some extent that you use it, it's not buy the equipment and then it's just...
Yeah, because you're paying, because they're design live, you're paying for more direction.
You're basically paying, can I say, an editor, basically?
No, no, so the required package is for the 25, it's for the indexing, but you have also 120 hours of other content you can put into the system and use. So if you have other orders that you don't want to index it, you can use it for that. The other thing I would point out is DOJ mandate for ADA compliance on closed captioning. So it doesn't affect you April 26th, you have a year till you get to 27th, but if you are streaming on your website, you will have to be ADA compliant by DOJ mandate in 27th.
Is that streaming, or is that...
Streaming.
So if it's just type...
If you're on the website, it's to be ADA compliant, and if you're streaming, you're posting on the website, it has to be closed captioned.
Your recorded videos will have to be closed captioned, which we try to do, but they are going to be taking a harder stance at accuracy?
It's also generated, basically, for item as well, while it's reading and it's doing the closed captioning as we go.
If you have a transcript for your clerk, if you search stuff, you see a lot of interim usage on that. You can table item, you can search a topic, golf, you know, anytime golf is said spoken word in the meeting.
It's good, it's a very robust tool. I mean, it is designed, it is designed well, the service is recommended.
So and technically, I mean, the legal obligation is 150,000? Was it 50,000? What was the, what was the, was it 50,000 that population?
For the state of Texas?
Yeah.
So state of Texas law is 50,000 or above, mandate you to do this.
Right.
DOJ is 50,000 and above April of 26th, below that, April of 2027. For captioning.
Yeah, this is not, you're recording these, you're not mandated at your population to have to be streaming these?
Yeah. If the state mandate doesn't hit the total, do you hit 50,000?
So I mean, I'm not ready to go full...
I'm kind of like you.
You know what, I'd like to give it six more months just to see feedback, and maybe we can get input from the citizens, and then by that time, if there's going to be additional mandates and the interest is not there, then that's when we do away with it altogether, in my opinion.
I think that, trade off, if there's going to be a bunch of mandate, and if the cost is pretty extreme to get to that federal mandated level, then you got away the cost benefit. And then I had mentioned, there is a certain politicization that occurs when it's publicized. We want to be transparent, we have open meetings, we have minutes, you know? I mean, we're pretty transparent. I really don't mind the video, but I think if you get to hot topics where cooler heads need to prevail, and sometimes hard decisions that maybe aren't popular need to be made, it's for the good of the city, broader, a few, a few can, I think, I think video can affect that a little bit. But again, I'd be fine, I'm kind of like Gary, I'd be fine watching it and seeing it work for a little while longer at a lower cost level, but I think ultimately there's a decision. If we're going to be mandated a bunch of extra costs, then you got to decide, okay, are we going full bore, or are we backing totally off?
Yeah, you'd have to be all in at that point.
Yeah, yeah.
I think this is a good beginning as a first start. I don't believe on the, yes, I think it might work good, because right now, when we have the presentations, you go back to watch the video, you can't really see what's on the screen very well, and I don't have a beautiful memory very much. So it is nice to know that, especially a lot of meetings have those, it can be multiple phases, so I don't have time to reference to go back to selfish reasons like Brett before I come to one of these meetings, it's nice. And I think if Granicus' solution was offered, whatever shared on the screen, it'd be much clearer to whoever's watching, either live or after the fact, I think that would be very helpful. And I know that being able to skip through the video through the indexing part, if you're actually going back to looking at this, or whatever, that's a really, really, really useful feature, because I think she knows on other services, websites.
Currently, yeah, on the index.
Yeah, currently the indexing is being done in-house.
Which is very timely to do for my...
It is. It is. And the, as far as the presentations go, that is valid. We think we have a solution to address that. But yeah, I mean, those are all valid points.
Yeah, I think some of that's maybe coming online, right? The ability to see what the screen is producing, that's the kind of indication I got a little bit ago, actually. Well, anyway, I think there's pros and cons both directions, and, yeah, and so it's kind of just up to council's pleasure about how you want to go forward, the cost benefit at this point. So, you know, I break the tie if it comes down to that. So what's your pleasure? Somebody want to make a motion, one way or the other?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I said my piece, but I'll throw it out there to see if others, what they think, due to the cost analysis and just, we've only done it for six months. I'd like to get six more months of data and keep our current person, company in place and do it this way, at least for the next six months.
Okay. Do you want in the motion, do you want that timeframe in there, or you want to just say, continue with the current provider until...
Well, because I, you know, we did this six months to try to get feedback. I think there's some positives, but I think that, and I would lean on staff a little bit to try to solicit some input from the citizens. So six months from now, we either keep it or we don't. And I think in six months from now, if we keep it, we're very likely to have to go to something like this, just with the federal mandates on so forth.
So you want the timeframe in the motion, I'm trying to be clear.
We need to, just, so we're on it, we need to approve or deny this item.
Right, I understand.
The discussion is the approval or denial.
So it's a...
I thought it said or...
We can end that timeframe to the approval or denial.
It's, well, it says or continue with dorm photography. All right, then I'll make a motion that we continue with dorm photography.
Is that what you want, or do you want to deny entering into a new...
I mean, we're looking at Granicus specifically.
Yeah.
So we need to either approve...
Make a motion to, to not proceed.
And then you want to follow up, how to continue after that?
The, the denial, if you deny and give us direction to bring it back to you in six months, we will, and by default, we will continue doing what we're doing unless you want to reject videoing altogether.
So this, this posted item is just hiring of Granicus and the Delcom Group, provide for live streaming of council and authorizing it, and so it needs a motion to either approve that item or deny that item?
That item.
And that, by denial, it would stay status quo, and I think we could verbalize at any point in there, just as a...
You could certainly add to the motion, the timeframe you'd like us to bring it back to you.
All right, given that input, you wanted to clarify your motion, Councilman Bill Ue, just to make sure...
No, I learned when you dig a hole and you get that deep, you just stop digging. So I'm really not...
Can I, can I try that?
Absolutely.
I would like to make a motion that we decline the Granicus and Delcom Group contract presented and revisit this in May of 2026.
You said add this item, or do you...
Either.
Okay.
And then 2026.
Okay. You heard the motion by Councilwoman Barrett. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay.
So I've got a motion by Councilwoman Barrett, seconded by Councilman Gann, to decline the Granicus and Delcom Group contract as presented in Agenda 9, and revisit that in May of 2026. Okay, any other discussion on that motion?
Which is still in this budget here, there is somebody who said a sidebar, but it doesn't appear.
Correct. Okay. All right, no discussion, all in favor of the motion to decline the contract indicated by raising your hand, so vote four is the vote to deny, okay? Anybody opposed and wants it? Okay, so I've got three, four, and one against...
She wants to revote.
Okay, you made the motion, so I didn't care. So is it two to two? Okay, so I'll vote in favor of the motion to decline and revisit May of 2026. So it will pass three to two. For the record, I have Councilman Chick and Councilman Barrett voting against the motion to decline. Got it. There's double negatives there.
Yep.
Lots of them. Give me a minute just to make my...
Yeah, I'm going to need a minute to digest.
All right, okay. I think we got passing. All right, item 10, is consideration of possible action on ordinance number 113225, a request for a specific use permit for a professional tattoo studio described as A, 1241A Tier Western Track 101, and known as 103 South Stemmons Freeway, zoned as regional commercial, and generally look on the west side of Stemmons Freeway, approximately 436 feet south of the intersection of Baller Street and South Stemmons Freeway. Right?
Mayor, council, this is the item that you all heard two weeks ago. First, I wanted to apologize to mayor and council. There was a typo on my part. When that originally came out, I had told the applicant that the meeting was on the 6th, not the 3rd, so they were not here due to my typo. They are not here tonight, even though I have an email from them stating they would be. So we can proceed with the item, but I just wanted to let you know, I know that was one of the reasons that y'all, that you all continued this item, was so that the applicant could be here to hear to, to answer any questions.
Yeah, that was the whole purpose of having them, and because I still have the same questions, and if they can't answer it, I'll wait and let my other, my peers on the left and right say their piece, but that was the whole purpose, we had tons of questions.
You had, someone on the council had asked another question about what the cities around us did. I did get that information, so I want to share that with you guys, just so you have it. Crum, Justin, and Argyle all have very similar processes to ours with an SUP in their most dense commercial district. Pallapoint has a district that allows it by right in their most dense commercial, and of course Denton considers it commercial retail, so anywhere commercial retail is allowed. It is allowed. So just so you have that information.
Did any of, do you have any, like, provisions around schools, churches, those things?
No, sir.
Okay, that was kind of part of the question we had too.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, me personally, maybe, I'm really not that against it. I mean, it's not something I'm real big time for, but I know it's kind of becoming a more of a norm. I really prefer it not be on our 35 corridor, and that, and I don't vote unless we get to a tie again. But, you know, I might be okay with it in some other part of the town, and...
Looking for a motion?
Yeah, I look for it.
I make a motion, we do not approve ordinance 113225, request of the SUP for professional tattoo studio, and as follows.
And Mr. Mayor, that's, we had a lot of questions, and we didn't want to make assumptions then, and we set it for them to come back to answer that. And there's a reason why we have an SUP here, because there are a lot of restrictions we place on that, and we just can't keep kicking this down, down the road. Since they're not here, we're going to make a decision, I'll second your motion.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Councilman Chick, seconded by Councilman Bill Ue, to deny ordinance number 113225, a request for a specific use permit for professional tattoo studio, as further described in Agenda item 10. Any other discussion anybody'd like to have on it?
I have a question.
Yep.
Sorry.
Yes, good.
This means that they can't come back for an SUP at this address for 12 months?
I believe that's correct.
Is that the process? Okay, so if I don't know for error, which is the note here for 12 months, and if they wanted to select maybe a more appropriate spot, they could come back for an SUP at a different address?
Right, because that would be a completely separate project.
So the request is not for the business, it's just for the address?
Per the address, the SUP runs with the location.
And the last, I have a question.
Yeah.
Do they have another obligation where they could be at the time? I don't like this crazy.
Not, not that they may be aware of.
Any other, good questions. Any other question or comment? Okay. So all in favor of the motion to deny ordinance number 113225, request for a specific use permit for a professional tattoo studio, as indicated in item 12, indicated by raising your hand. Okay, the motion to deny passes four to zero.
Thank you, Council.
Council, you have any future agenda items you'd like to mention to staff at this time?
We were coming up on the 90-day review for the city fire money that we were doing with the county. We were going to, we talked about reviewing in 90 days.
The fire chief is putting that information together.
Anything else on the future agenda? Okay, council, you've got some information items there, your rate filing, kind of normal procedural thing. Any questions on that at all? Okay. Therefore, that brings us to our executive session. Pursuit of Opens Meeting Act, Chapter 551, the city council will meet in a closed executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, for deliberations regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, if deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with the third person. We will call, go into executive session under that, Section 551.072, at 8:11 PM. two at eight eleven P M.
Okay. This will call council back into regular session and close our executive session at 9:19 PM. I don't believe there's any action coming out of that executive session and seeing no other agenda items to be covered this evening. I will call this meeting adjourned at 9:19.
Thank you, Council.